Mr. Matt.
Yep. Josh will be acting for Matt, and you'll be acting all meeting. I'm kind of acting on one item, but you're going to be all meeting.
Oh, one question?
Nice fireman stat.
Wow.
Yeah. Oh, I see, yeah, yeah. All right. At this time, I will call the November 15th meeting of the Auburn Planning Board to order. We'll begin with a roll call, and I'll start on my far left.
Darren Finnegan.
Brian Dubois.
Josh Daigle.
Paul Jacques.
Evan Seer.
Stacy LeBlanc.
Tony Ferraro.
Riley Bergeron.
The next item on our agenda is approval of the October 11th, 2022, meeting minutes. These minutes are available on YouTube. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, I seek a motion to accept. Motion by Mr. Dubois, is there a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor. Minutes of the October meeting are approved.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
For item one, number one, that's you. Item number three on the agenda, citing your conflict of interest, I'll recuse myself.
All right, excellent. As Mr. Dubois is recusing himself, we will need to elevate one of our associate members. We also have a member that is absent, Mr. Matthew Duval. This evening, Josh Daigle will be acting as full member in place of Mr. Duval. Mr. Daigle and Mr. Jacques are our associate members. Normally, they would have rights to participate in discussion, however, not have rights to make motion or vote. When a member is absent, they are elevated to act in their place. So Mr. Daigle will be acting as a full member for the remainder of the meeting, and since Mr. Dubois has recused himself on this item, we will elevate Mr. Paul Jacques to act as a full member for this item, item three. Item three is a public hearing map amendment, a petition to amend the areas outside the Lake Auburn watershed, consisting of 33.49 plus or minus acres of 38.22 total acres on 150 Andrew Drive, parcel ID 347-003, from Agriculture and Resource Protection, occupying roughly 29.92 acres, and Low Density Country Residential, occupying approximately 3.57 acres, to Suburban Residential. The remaining 4.73 acres in the Auburn watershed would remain protected through an ag zone designation. The proposal pursuant to Chapter 60, Article 17, Division 2, Amendment to the Zoning Ordinance, or zoning map. For those members that are present, this is a public hearing. The planning board conducts public hearings as follows. First, we hear from the staff through their staff report. Members of the planning board will then be given the opportunity to ask questions of staff. In this case, because this is a citizen-initiated petition, the citizen who initiated the petition will then be given the opportunity to speak to the board. The board may choose to ask that individual questions. We will then open it up to the public input section of the hearing. At that point, we will invite members of the public to speak. I will go over the rules. When we get there, essentially, we ask that you limit your comments to five minutes, that you remain on topic with regard to the hearing, that you begin by stating your name and address. Once members of the public have had a chance to speak, we will then close the public input section of the hearing. The planning board will move on to deliberation and possible final action. So, having said that, is staff ready to present their report?
Yes, we are, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, so that we have this map up here, 150 Andrew Drive. And the way we have listed the staff report, we have laid the staff report out today is we have two possible suggested motions. You might notice in the back, there's a motion A and a motion B. There are two, um, there are two methods in the comprehensive plan that the planning board could follow in deciding to rezone or not rezone this, um, this parcel. The mechanisms are not laid out in any particular order in the staff report. So, right now, the first method that is laid out is, um, is a method to strip zone the area along the road, and I will walk through that option. Option B is to rezone the parcel as, um, as it's part of an, of the old East Auburn city core, and that is listed as option B, though it is not preferred over option A. Just wanted to make a note of the order in the staff report and to avoid, to avoid confusion and let, and let you decide what makes the most sense for this parcel. So petitions can, so zone changes can be initiated by, um, 25 registered voters of the city submitting a petition with the map in order to, that shows, that shows what the zone change area would be. And I will start with the first option here, just in order of the staff report. One, one piece of guidance that the comprehensive plan gives is that you can rezone an area along an agriculture, an agricultural strip if it kind of falls into a residential zoning pattern. In this case, let's see, I'm sorry. So it would be six to eight homes per half mile, counting both sides of the road. So this road meets the criteria with seven homes in .25 miles. The comprehensive plan also considers reserve area adjacency, so that means adjacency to an undeveloped, for the, for an undeveloped piece of land for this foreseeable future, and natural resource adjacency, which means area with significant natural value. That includes areas with, with slopes, um, over 25%. It also includes significant habitat and adjacency to ag and resource protection land. So if, if the, if the planning board wanted to follow the residential strips guidance in the comprehensive plan, that option, it could rezone the first 450 feet of the parcel to suburban residential. And in the packet, there was also included a description of what suburban residential zoning entails. That would look something like this map here, to rezone that piece of it. Again, the request is to rezone the, um, the whole of the parcel, excluding the watershed, which is outlined in purple right here. This is, this is kind of a purple shaded outline that represents the Lake Auburn watershed. A second option here would be to follow the guidance of the comprehensive plan that suggests that in the future, for land growth, Auburn could expand in the, in the traditional historic village centers. And the future land use plan reaffirms the basic objective of land use planning, that development in Auburn should grow out from the historic cores, um, which are downtown, Danville, New Auburn, West Auburn, and East Auburn, from, and from older established neighborhoods. This policy was originally set forth in the planning's first, in the city's first comprehensive plan over half a century ago, and has continued to guide the city's land use planning ever since. We continue to believe that growth, that growth out from the downtown core and older established neighborhoods provides the most efficient utilization of city services. So East Auburn, that, that is a neighborhood, that is this neighborhood, or in this region anyway, and it is listed in the comprehensive plan as an area that should be considered in the future for, for growth. And based on that being listed as, um, as a specific neighborhood in the comprehensive plan, um, the board could decide that it might make more sense to, to rezone this portion, the portion as requested in alignment with what was, what was requested and, um, the historic core there. So the action that we've suggested today is that, um, the planning board either rezone 21.06 acres bordering Andrew Drive in the ag zone to suburban residential and leave about 12 acres remaining in the ag zone and 4.66 acres to remain in low-density country residential, following the boundaries in figure one, which is this figure right here. Figure one. Or that the planning board rezone 33.49 plus or minus acres of 38.22 total acres on 150 Andrew Drive, um, from Ag, Agriculture and Resource Protection, occupying 29.29% or 29.29 plus or minus acres, and Low Density Country Residential, occupying 3.57 acres, zoning districts to suburban residential, and that is shown in figure three, which is right here. You could choose either of these options, depending on whether you, you, you think it makes sense to follow the comprehensive plan's guidance to, to build into that East Auburn neighborhood, um, or if you think that the residential strip zone makes the most sense here. But those are two things that the comprehensive plan can bring forward. And, um, again, the, the request is to rezone the whole portion outside of the watershed. The part in the watershed would remain protected. The proposal wouldn't, um, can be implemented without detrimental city resources. It can meet the general future land use plan pattern of development. It will occur outside the Lake Auburn watershed. And there are two motions that are, that are there, and, um, we are ready to answer any questions and...
Are there any questions for staff? I do have a question for staff. Are you able to bring up the zoning map?
Yep.
The GIS maps, please.
I can.
So this... So we're seeing in purple the watershed boundary to the west, the green is...
Yep, so, so to the west here is the watershed boundary. This blue is Lake Auburn. Route four. This green here is part of, this darker green is part of the same parcel. This is zone Low Density Country Residential.
And the purple parcel directly below is suburban residential?
This is suburban residential, yes, thanks for clarifying that. So if we scroll out a little bit, this parcel directly abuts this, um, the neighborhood that is all zoned suburban residential, which is represented in purple. And the land pattern that you can see is, there are already this strip of, um, all of these houses along Andrews Drive, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven houses in this stretch here, and, um, all are currently, um, uh, non-conforming as they are in the ag zone. And, um, so that, that's the, you can decide what makes, what makes sense in this, in this area.
I think one of the things that would be a primary concern for us, too, would be, as we've looked at other zoning changes on the board, one of the primary metrics we've used is proximity to city water and city sewer. Are you, are you able to put that?
I am able to put this on, let me find it. Okay. Sewer is represented in purple, so it looks like it stops on Andrew Drive closer to the start of the road, and I'll turn off sewer and I'll turn water on. Water stops in the same, in the same spot, so just a little bit down the road from where this parcel is.
It looks like it, um, actually extends the backside much closer.
It does on the backside, yes. Yep, the backside extends, it looks like, to almost the adjacent line of the parcel, where the parcel begins.
And can you, can you use the, um, measuring tool to give us an idea of the line distance on Andrews Road to the parcel and then off, um, the road to the west?
From water and sewer?
Yes, please.
Yep, can do that. I don't know why it's not going. Okay, now it's working.
So somewhere...
About, about 1,200 feet, I overmeasured a little bit.
Yeah, you overshot it by a bit, but okay.
Let me do it again.
Okay. And then from the backside? Okay. All right, thank you very much.
I do have a question, though I think I know the answer, but just to kind of alleviate my, any questions I do have in my, my mind. So with LD 2003 coming into effect on 7 of 2023, would that impact any of this conversation that we're having now?
I, I don't, I don't think I have a definitive answer, but Eric.
It, um, I think the rulemaking that's in progress now will decide some of that. It might allow for an additional house on every lot that has an existing house, regardless of local zoning, but that's going to be clarified in rulemaking, and I think at a minimum it would, um... So that'll either happen because of LD 2003, or it will sort of happen ahead of that with the zone change, that you could do a duplex on large enough lots. But I, I don't, I don't know for sure how that's going to play out in the final rulemaking.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just a quick clarifying one. Is that 4.73 acres going to remain protected in either case, in option A or B?
That's what we have suggested here, and it was, um, that was the request in the petition originally.
Okay.
Yep.
Additional questions? Seeing none at this time, we would ask the petitioner if they wish to speak and share any information with the board that they think is pertinent to this topic.
Good evening. I need to, can you hear me?
Yep.
Working? My name is Brian Dubois, I'm a real estate broker with Keller Williams Realty and a resident at 138 Fairview Avenue. I do represent the owners of this property, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you. Some points of emphasis is that this does not touch the watershed at all. We'd like to emphasize that. Current conditions, uh, some things for you to consider. The current conditions of the property, currently what you don't see here is the slope on this property. It's wooded, it's got some openings, but it's got a tremendous slope, um, from a beautiful peak down to Andrews Drive, very steep, um, and provide some challenges. To our knowledge, this property has never lent itself to producing any household income of any kind from any type of agricultural activity. Adjacent property was used to have some recreational ski areas, complete with a tow rope, um, but the terrain on this lot doesn't lend itself to really any agricultural opportunity. What we do have in this lot is some amazing views of both Lake Auburn and Andrews Skoggin River. Lake Auburn to the west, Andrews Skoggin River to the east. Current uses for the property, um, there is that one buildable lot in green on your map. Current zoning, um, and, uh, under current zoning and due to extraordinary generosity of Dr. and Mrs. Reader, the current owners, uh, they have permitted neighbors to use the land for hunting and exploring. Some of those neighbors may be here tonight, some of them may even speak in opposition of this proposal. Uh, and why not? If the readers sell, um, then their playground goes away. Potential uses for the property, we all understand that we face a housing crisis. This parcel lends itself to some unusual opportunities to address this significant challenge. With these views from the pinnacle combined with the road frontage downslope on Andrew Drive, uh, as was pointed out, uh, a number of residences along Andrew Drive already. This property is wonderfully suited for mixed housing of all varieties and at various price points. It's a perfect opportunity for our city and is consistent with our comprehensive plan. Benefits include increased tax base without increased burden for the city. No impact on infrastructure, we suspect that private wastewater and private water supply will be needed. No impact on schools. East Auburn is, uh, the highest rated school in the district, yet is frequently on the chopping blocks due to low enrollment. There is plenty of capacity. The zoning proposal, as I mentioned, is 100% outside of the Lake Auburn watershed. We have newly reconstructed access to Route Four. There has been and continues to be some investment in the outlet playground. There's been all kinds of investment in the Route Four corridor, most notably Target, but we have the Norway Savings Bank Arena, the YMCA Outdoor Learning Center, Central Main Community College, St. Dom's, New Olive Garden, and of course, Shaw's is our trusted cornerstone. So in summary, with no opportunity for the owner to generate any income from the current ag zone, combined with the opportunity for the city to generate tax revenue while adjusting, excuse me, addressing the housing crisis, it is obvious that this proposal is mutually beneficial. Any questions for me?
Questions for the agent of the applicant?
Uh, when did the, uh, parcel owner purchase the land?
About 40 years ago.
Thank you.
Can you speak to why the petitioner chose, or maybe not chose, um, but why the petition did not include all of the house lots on that side of Andrew Drive?
Not sure I follow the question. We're looking for that entire script to be...
Generally, when we see a zone change like this, we'll see a block, and in this case, we're seeing an entire parcel. But normally, we would see, it would be more typical to have seen all of the lots on that side of the road included in the petition, and I was wondering if there was a reason why they weren't.
To include the existing residential homes, you mean?
Correct.
Because we, the seller doesn't own them?
Okay, I was just...
Doesn't want to speak for those, those owners, those property owners?
Okay.
You know, I, I guess if it, in this case, if it walks like a duck and quacks like a duck, it's probably a duck. Right now, this whole neighborhood is behaving like what we're proposing. We'd like to formalize that.
Are there, there are other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much. At this time, I would seek a motion to open the public input section of the hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have now entered into the public input section of the hearing. I'll remind the public of, um, our rules of procedure. We ask that you limit your comments to, um, five minutes, and I will do my best to, uh, keep track of that for you. We ask that you start by stating your name and address, that you speak specifically to this topic. Members of the public should know that the planning board does not generally answer questions during the public comment section of the hearing. However, we will write those down, um, and we will make sure that we ask staff those pertinent questions. On a rare occasion, um, I may stop your time because a specific question warrants being answered immediately. Uh, I will pause your time so that you have your full time. Know that, um, if at any point we interrupt you, I will, I will pause your time, uh, in order for us to take care of those things. Having said that, um, members of the public are welcome to come forward.
Hi, my name's Ryan Smith, I live at 14 Weaver Street. I actually was not planning on talking about this topic tonight. I prepared for another one, but, um, information that came up, LD 2003, I will say there might be pending rulemaking, as Eric suggested earlier, um, substantial changes, but basically what we have from the state is, it says that we can take regulatory actions to protect natural resources. So if this does say ag zone and natural, you know, resource protection, there's potential there that an ordinance could protect us from the two-house rule, but it's probably rulemaking and whether the city decides to do something like that in the ag zone or not. So there's kind of some asterisks there. So I guess I wanted to clarify that. Something else that just kind of came up, and I've been studying the planning board manual quite extensively, um, over the past year or so, partly because of my involvement here in the city that started around New Year when I got a letter about rezoning in my neighborhood, but also because I took on a position that requires me to know that information. I want to talk about page 21 of the planning board member, uh, manual, given by the state, which says, "Current board member representing clients before the board." It represents Title 30A MRSA 2605, and it says that a member of the board should refrain from otherwise attempting to influence a decision of which the official has an interest. And they should refrain from representing another applicant who is seeking the board's approval or some other party to the proceeding. How did we get here again?
I'm going to pause you right there, Mr. Dubois asked me that question. In the past, we have always allowed planning board members to do so, and I apologize if we're in error, um, but I would hate for Mr. Dubois to bear the burden of that decision. He, in, in good faith, asked, and I, in good faith, answered based on our previous practices. Thank you for bringing that up, I've written that down.
I'm just saying, right...
I, I understand, and I'm saying thank you. I want to put it on public record that Mr. Dubois did ask in good faith, and that I will accept responsibility for having given him counsel that he could do that. Thank you.
Yeah, so one more part, actually, building off what you just said, and I'm not trying to get in a debate with you at all, I understand that that conversation happened, but I'd also be careful about discussing applications outside of planning board meetings, because two planning board members cannot discuss applications. Now, if that was specifically to the conflict part of it, then that's up to interpretation, but I'd also... But I'd also...
Ryan, I really appreciate, I'm learning a lot too as we have this discussion. What I really appreciate is if we all stayed in our lanes, right? So at this point in time, we're talking about specifically this parcel of land, and I do appreciate you sharing us your opinion, and I'm sure you can work with Eric and another means to address the concern that you have potentially regarding a planning board member speaking about this.
Yeah, well, it just came up. I didn't expect that.
Okay. Yep. We'll have to talk about this parcel of land.
No one else is fast enough. My name is Pam Rousseau. I live at 745 West Auburn. First of all, I, this is a historic area. I don't know if you know that. That's Mount Guile. They had an observatory at the top. There was skiing there, and when one person died at that ski area, then they closed it down. But this is actually an historic area called Mount Guile, and I didn't know if you guys knew that. Number five and number three, I've got to quickly pull this up again, and I'm blind, so I've got to put it sideways. On considerations, number five, it says that it can't, it will tax the city's ability for services, and you know what? I would really like to see a count. You know, my brother is a council, oh, he's the equivalent of the mayor of Carlisle, Massachusetts, and he said, "When they do things, they look at exactly how much it's going to cost. How much is it going to cost for this? How much is it going to cost to do the sewer? How much is it going to cost to do?" And versus what you get in taxes from the tax base there. And I don't know if you guys have done that, and that needs to be done because it could actually end up costing Auburn money. The other thing is, sorry about that, number three is, it talks about natural resources and that it should not be allowed, and I'm just saying is that if you've got walking areas, you've got Mount Guile, and that is a, I think that should be considered a natural resource and should also influence a no.
I live on Andrew Drive, and I'm here to ask you to consider a few things before you decide to possibly amend the zoning in my neighborhood. The petition that was signed that brought this before the committee tonight was not included by any resident in our neighborhood. In fact, we only found out that this was coming to the council's attention because of the notice for this meeting tonight. There are many neighborhood people in this room and many who couldn't make it here tonight that are here in opposition because we enjoy our small neighborhood where everyone can play sports in the road with their kids, where you can safely walk your dog, stop and talk to the neighbors, where you can ride bikes because there is little to no traffic in our neighborhood. The proposed zoning change request would appease one landowner who has never lived in our neighborhood but is looking to reach a broader real estate audience for a lot that was purchased as agricultural and resource protected. A suburban residential zone change would allow subdivisions and multi-units to be built, bringing in many new residents to our neighborhood, increasing the traffic, which would endanger the six special needs kids who live in those seven houses on Andrew Drive. Building multi-units on that 32-acre lot would require blasting, which would further concern the homeowners for the integrity of their home foundations, their wealth. There's also concern of mineral runoff which would go into the Lake Auburn watershed. So I ask you to please support our current zoning and reject an amendment to the zone. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
I'm just getting some feedback that if people can please get close enough to the mic so you can hear yourself over the speakers, people at home are having trouble hearing the public.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this topic?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. My name's Razelle Ward. Work, live at 1372 North River Road, and just a few items I'd like to bring up to you to clarify that that piece of property is ag and resource protection, an area of significant natural value. Building on, this is building on top of Mount Guile, which is a beloved resource for the neighborhood and people that come and visit. There is a third option, when the options were presented tonight, that would be to leave that property as it is. I just want to put that out there to you. And although I understand that people should be able to, you know, sell their property as they'd like to, just because what you bought 30 or 40 years ago and have had no luck selling doesn't mean we should change zoning and bear the brunt of that. I consider that buyer beware. This is a neighborhood, not a lot as described frequently, with children that play and ride bikes, baseball fields, neighbors walking, a real small neighborhood that now may have, as noted, heavy equipment running up the mountain to build a few homes. Yes, homes with amazing views, however, those views will be just bought for a select few to enjoy. It's unbelievable to me, though, and unpalatable, that others can come, sign a petition, and dictate to a neighborhood how that zoning is going to change for them. If the council allows that this time, the planning board, sorry, allows that this time, how is that going to prevent this from happening again and again and again? How does this stop a small group of people who can just map out little pieces of ag zone and resource protection zone property in and around, in Auburn, and decide they're going to change that zoning too, when the people who live there only find out about it because they get a letter in the mail? Many of the neighborhood citizens are sitting here tonight, and we'd like you to say we don't think that's how people should be doing business, although it may be okay procedurally, it's an awful way to be neighbors and all citizens of Auburn. It doesn't lend itself to trust in this process. I would ask you to vote no on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the board?
My name's Brian Farrell. I live on 172 Andrew Drive, and this community has been wholesome and very peaceful for a very long time. We've had people that play softball games there. We've had people that have a small community, the Little World's Fair, all types of things that have happened. And there's no reason why this should be changed agricultural land. And the one question that I have you is, when you asked this gentleman, why weren't those other residents changed to, what's changed from agricultural to residential or development? And his answer was, why did that happen? Why was nobody informed on how this is all going down? Does anybody have an answer for that?
We will write these questions. I'll pause, so I'm not taking your time. As I said before, any questions that are brought, we will generally stop if someone asks a question about their individual parcel or something like that, but I see that we are writing these questions down, and we'll be sure to ask questions after.
Because I just purchased this property about a month ago, and the reason I bought the property was because it was agricultural land. It wasn't to be developed. So the fact that you want this changed for our community is just disappointing. I hope you guys will reconsider.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board on this topic? Seeing none, all.
My name's Dan Howard. I live at 147 Andrew Drive. I've lived here for 14 years in this home. I've lived in this little neighborhood for 58, my 58 years. So I've been coming home from work, turning off Centristory, going into this little neighborhood, which consists of three dead-end streets, and not too many houses. And this particular, what you call a lot here, if you were to change that all, throw all kinds of houses up and back there, excuse me, yep, all the people that already live here, our view is going to change to looking up at a new house up above you, looking down at you. It's going to be very intrusive to somebody who just bought a house to have somebody build, you're shoehorning a strip mall in between two dead-end streets. That's what you're saying, if you want to change it to a strip. And I just, I find it pretty appalling, so it's my opinion. Somebody who doesn't even live here can sign a petition and change your neighborhood forever, possibly.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Hi, I'm Chrissy Thompson. I live on 279 Oak Hill Road. My parcel's the one that you measured across to see about the water there. I just wanted to speak. I know landowners, and I think they're lovely people, and we have had the opportunity to use their property. We mow the walkway through the trail that goes all along Mount Guile, and my parents are the owners of the ski area, so it's an area that's been special to my family for a long time. My biggest concern that I would like to bring to board is the school. I know that it's a small school, but the class sizes are large, and they have been pushing kids to other schools. So the impact of developing this area is going to have to impact the school department and thinking about rezoning because the school absolutely can't handle more kids right now. They are trying to figure out if they can get another double wide out there. So that's the big concern I have, and hopefully you'll take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the board? Seeing none at this time, I would entertain a motion to close the public input section of the hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? So in public comment, there were many concerns raised. I think the only question that was really addressed as a question was, why wasn't the neighborhood asked or notified? Can staff explain the process for a, that drove this petition so that we can understand who's required to be involved and so on and so forth?
Yeah, we met with the property owner and Mr. DuBois about this. They didn't have a budding property owners that were, they knew were interested in being a part of the petition, so staff suggested, hey, the way to start that, get it in front of the planning board, is to include only the parcels that you have control over and not assume that other people are interested. So they submitted the petition, and that's when the really public process, the public discussion starts. The city of Auburn is required to, by state law, notify property owners that have bought the parcel, but the city of Auburn ordinance goes well beyond that and requires locally that we notify all of the property owners that are within 500 feet of the parcel that's under consideration. Then we did send that notice out to all the parcels within 500 feet of this parcel, is how they were aware of the hearing tonight, and tonight's really that opportunity for public input. We discouraged them from including parcels that they didn't have control of in their petition, although, as you asked earlier about why those parcels weren't included, if we really sort of bigger picture look at implementing the comprehensive plan, those parcels ultimately should be included someday in a zone change, but because the petition didn't include them, we're asking you to hold the, hold the hearing based on the petition. There's a couple of sections of the plan that support a change like this, either the residential strips or the expansion of our historic cores, which specifically lists East Auburn. But ultimately, if the planning board supported this effort and the council approved it, we really should look at being more comprehensive about achieving that goal of expanding the historic core, East Auburn, that's specifically referenced in the plan. From this point, after you accept input from the public, the process continues where we would hold another public hearing with the city council and two readings. One of those would also be the public hearing, but property owners within 500 feet of this parcel would again be notified to voice their opinions with the city council before a final decision is made.
Excuse me? So as I said, I do have a lot of comments. Did any other members pick out specific questions that they heard?
Would there be a way to, I know that it's not part of the packet, but would there be a way to estimate what the cost of running, the cost of the sewage and water extension would be?
We could get that estimate. I don't know if that will happen. The suburban residential zone is the zone that requires a minimum lot size that allows for private water and septic, but they could extend it if they, if they chose to, but they could develop suburban residential zone compliant house lots without extending it as well.
I was just going to ask, I was going to say if we had other questions directly from public, if there are questions from members of the board.
So they, people were asking about subdivisions and multi-units. Is that the plan for that?
We don't know of any specific development plans. I think the current owner is trying to sell the lot, and this is another LD 2003 related question too, I guess. Right now, the suburban residential zone only allows for one and two families or two single families on a parcel. It does not allow for multifamily construction. LD 2003 could change that throughout all zones within the state, but right now, it'd be one or two families in the suburban residential zone.
Okay. And how many houses could they actually build in that, in that acre? What is it, 21?
I think a lot of it would depend on whether or not they were building new roads, limited purely by frontage and not building new roads, less than five. If they were to build new roads or develop more of a condo-style development, then that number could go up as much as one per half acre.
There's been quite a bit of talk about use, public use of that land. Just as a clarifying, this is all private, correct? There's no public access to Mount Guile or anything like that? It's all just what the property owner has and what people are using it as currently?
Yeah, I'm not aware of any public easements or formal public access. It's always, always been at the permission of the property owner.
Are you able to pull up the contours so that we can see?
I can, I can try to do that, and also I think I could probably find them online. Oh, really? Okay.
If you zoom in a little bit, you can see the contour lines.
Great, 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 okay. I'm just going to take off the...
If you're... If you're on the advanced public parcel viewer, it doesn't automatically show the contours. It's one of the layers.
Okay, let me see if I can find a layer.
And if it's not on this one, it's on the other public parcel viewer map.
There we go. It's kind of hard to see.
Oh, it's incredibly hard to see.
So while she's trying to find that, what are your thoughts around this as we're prepping to look at the contours?
Tony asked a question about the number of houses that can be built and internal roads. And it's not unreasonable to think that someone might build a house on a slope, but it's incredibly expensive to build a roadway on a slope. So I'm trying to get a sense for the likelihood of an internal road.
I think while Catherine's pulling that up, we looked at two provisions within the comp plan as part of the staff report. And the residential road strips is more broad to all road strips that meet those criteria throughout the city where it's mostly ag zone. That does require that you look at the slopes. The expansion of a historic core doesn't have those same criteria. And that provision where it mentions East Auburn is, is much more specific to these types of historic neighborhoods and growing from the core being more efficient than randomly creating residential areas that are not connected to that, that core.
And so while, while Catherine's looking for that, what's the approximate density of those, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven homes right there? What are the average, what are the? If we were to take, say that, there are three lots that are fairly square. I would say those are the average size. What size lots are those?
We can get that number.
If, just click on one and...
This is 1.09 acres.
Okay.
Right here. This small one next to it, oh wait, let's see. This one is 0.23 acres.
Okay. While Catherine is looking at this, are there other comments from members of the board?
No, I think my only thought is I just want to make sure that we're just paying attention to the parcel and the zoning and not jumping ahead to development and potential buildable buildings, right? Like I think, kind of back to what Eric said, maybe not as pronounced as it should have been, but yet this was coming down the pike anyway. So this is part of the comprehensive plan, this was coming down the pike. Us changing the zoning currently, if we do, is just getting ahead of it versus what's currently in the pipeline.
Yeah. Also, one of the things that struck me through most of the commenters was, that this is described as a neighborhood. I guess, which is sort of not what we expect generally on the planning board when we're looking at the ag zone and a density of one house per 10 acres. That was just something that struck, that sort of jumped out to me, but. Any other comments, questions?
Mr. Cousins, how, I guess looking at it, what is the possible likelihood of anybody ever coming in here to doing anything agriculture based off that available space?
Catherine's pulling up the slopes on the lot, but there's really sort of a division down the middle of that lot where there's a flat area along the existing roadway, Andrew Drive, both sides of the road, including this lot. And then there's a really steep section. And then there's more of a plateau up at the top of Oak Hill Road. So it functions, I think, kind of more as two potentially developable areas separated by the steep slopes, which I wouldn't anticipate any roads or construction on the slopes themselves. But it would create an opportunity for views. And if you were to do some kind of a cluster development where you can protect parts of the parcel from development, maybe even promote public access through parts of it, then you could concentrate those units on the flatter, more developable areas where there's not the natural resources to protect like the steep slopes.
This, this map here is a sketch map that shows in the crosshatch the, the area of the parcel that has over 25% slopes. So that's, that's, it's steep, that's, it kind of comes all, this covers this area here.
You can see that sort of bisects the parcel. So there's that sort of peak plateau area on the top and then a less steep, flatter area along the existing roadway.
And back to the, back to the village plan. As I understand it, there was a boat launch proposed in this area, correct? And that was proposed as part of this future village plan, but also in conjunction with the dam, correct?
Yeah, so the future land use plan calls for one of the major recreational goals being public access to natural resources and water, water resources. The Federal Energy Regulatory Commission requires hydropower owners to provide recreational access to the impoundments that they create in the rivers that belong to the state of Maine or the people of the state of Maine. And the license for this facility does require that Brookfield construct one more public access point to Gulf Island Pond. That was proposed about 10 years ago in the East Auburn neighborhood. There's a parcel of land across the street from this one. Catherine's cursor is just about on it right there. That is owned by Brookfield. And that is where they proposed to build a public access point. So if the city wanted that, Brookfield would be required to construct that within one to two years after the city asking them to at no cost to the city. When it was proposed about 10 years ago, the neighborhood was really concerned about pedestrian safety, lack of sidewalks and safety on Route 4. If there was going to be more track, more trailers and vehicles entering and exiting the neighborhood. The city sort of shelved that plan at that time to wait for the Route 4 safety improvements. And then there could certainly be more discussions over time about how do you improve the facilities within the neighborhood? So this could be a water access neighborhood.
Okay. I'm not hearing a whole lot of chatter from the board with questions and concerns. So. If there are any more questions or comments, I'm going to seek a, a motion.
I'm sorry, I didn't know that we were in the discussion part. I thought we were just asking questions. I do have a comment.
Yeah, absolutely.
My thoughts on the option to approach it in a strip zone style, I would, I would cite consideration three, natural resource adjacency as a reason I would be opposed to that option as it's adjacent to the Lake Auburn watershed.
Can you repeat that?
The strip zoning?
Yes, so the, in the considerations for the rural residential road strips, consideration three is a reason not to establish one. Says a residential strip should not be provided along a rural road if the area adjacent to the road has significant natural value. Areas of significant natural value include areas that are zoned resource protection or high-value wetlands, which I would argue the Lake Auburn watershed is.
So Riley, are you saying, so we have options A and B. I think you said, I guess I'm confused, no.
Of the suggested, suggested motion A would be approaching this as a strip zone.
Yeah, okay.
And I would be opposed to that because it's cited in the comp plan that I think considerations three would exclude that.
Is there a member willing to make a motion? By willing, I mean, we need a motion in order to move forward regardless of what that motion is.
All right, I'll make a motion. Go ahead, Riley.
Okay, I would act, I would make a motion that the board not pass a favorable recommendation of this petition to the city council.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Well, discussion, I do have a question.
Yeah.
Circling back to Eric. And it was part of an ongoing dialogue that you were having and I kind of picked up on it, but I just want to make sure I understand it and folks in the room understand it as well. So if we do not make a decision on this parcel of land current day today, through the comp plan planning process, could this parcel of land eventually change?
So I guess my expectation from reading through the comp plan and some of the other zone changes that the comp plan recommends we're already working on and staff hasn't been trying to create new ones until we get through some of the other ones. This would be the expansion of the East Auburn Village as an efficient way to provide new housing opportunities as opposed to sort of randomly scattering residential zoning throughout the city. So this was inevitably going to be considered. It probably would have included more land if it wasn't driven by the petition.
And that village is zoned as what?
Right now, that village is partly suburban residential.
Okay.
Partly low-density country residential and then partly ag-zoned, which is unusual for a village area to still be in the ag zone with that kind of housing density along an existing road.
I guess that's my, that's sort of my comment. I, I can't believe that this is actually zoned ag to begin with. I'm surprised that we're not looking at a strip pre-existing this decision. Because those strips were extended throughout the city where we had housing like this. I guess I look at it and I think that as far as planning goes, this makes sense to extend, extend a zone that's adjacent, that, that already exists as adjacent. Is not inconsistent with the houses that are in the neighborhood already. It seems like a wonderful place to live. It seems like the kind of place that I think more people would love to live and would care and cherish as, as much as, as the people that live there now. And so. I'm not in favor of the motion that was, that was made and seconded, but that's my two cents.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of it either, only because just what you said as well is adjacent to it. So I have not heard of rationale as to why not, why to keep it as it is current day, especially in light of the comp plan and future changes. So I'm, I'm not clear why we wouldn't.
Any other discussion? So there's a motion on the table that has been seconded to forward a recommendation that this not be rezoned.
Actually, Mr. Chair, I just had one question, if that's okay?
Yep.
Mr. Cousins, if left as it is right now, what could the property owner do as far as, say, wanting to build?
Currently, there's just the, the option of either meeting the 30% income standard and building a home within the ag zone portion. This land is wooded, it's rocky, it's steep in portions of it. It really isn't conducive to generating income through agriculture. And then their other option would also be to build either one or two units within the residential portion up at the top of the hill in that low-density country residential zone, which is partly in the watershed and partly out of the watershed where it's currently residential, the watershed of Lake Auburn, sorry.
Thank you.
In relation to that, the, we established though that the property owner did purchase that land with those restrictions already in place, yeah?
Yeah, absolutely.
And Mr. Cousins, the area on the westerly side of Andrew, I can see in the packet that we have that that might be, come up before us to change to suburban residential at some future date?
The, the easterly side here?
Excuse me?
The easterly side of Andrew Drive, right, right here?
I did say the wrong direction, yes.
So that's not on the petition today, but if you were to perhaps follow either the residential strip zoning recommendation, then one, a future thing that the, that the planning board could consider bringing up might be to, might be to rezone these few house lots here as well as maybe 450 feet on this other side of Andrew Drive to continue this residential strip you can, that you can see here. Or if you wanted to make the village core, you could also choose to in the future rezone parts of this, this land over on the other side of Andrew Drive to make it more, to make it more uniform. And, and provide access to that, to this boat launch, a possible boat launch.
I think doing just this parcel and not eventually doing the rest of it is sort of just half implementing what the comp plan recommends for that village.
Other questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll take a vote. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Any abstention? None.
So I'd like to make a motion. Is now the time?
Yes.
Okay. I make a motion to amend 33 plus or minus acres of 38 total acres on 150 Andrew Drive parcel ID 347003 from Agriculture and Resource Protection occupying 30-plus-ish acres and Low Density Country Residential occupying four-ish acres. Zoning district to suburban residential. The remaining four-ish acres in the Lake Auburn watershed district would remain protected through the ag zone designation.
Can I ask for a clarification?
Sure.
You made a motion to amend, I assume you mean, were you saying you're making a motion to recommend?
I didn't say amend, I'm making a motion to recommend.
To recommend, okay, I apologize, that's my mistake. Is there a second?
Second.
And just, just for clarification, when you say 33-ish or 38-ish, are you comfortable with the acreages that were in the draft motion as written?
I am. Is everyone else?
Yes. Questions, comments, debate on the motion?
What was your thoughts, Stacy? What was your thoughts Stacy about doing that motion versus the first one?
Cause it follows the comp plan.
Any other debate, question, comment? None being out called vote, all those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Did you abstain or you were in favor?
Abstaining.
And you're, and one abstention? Okay, so the planning board is forwarding a recommendation. The next item on our agenda, the next two items are workshops. The first workshop is regarding resolve zero six dash zero nine zero six two zero two two. In which the city council directs planning board after consultation from the Sustainability and Natural Resources Management Board. To provide an opinion and deliver recommendations to the city council no later than March twentieth, two thousand twenty-three on whether to eliminate the income standard. And the current strip zoning limitations in all areas outside of Lake Auburn watershed overlay. We had asked staff to provide information to the board. Regarding. What we already know on this, however, I know that a city council took some action at their last meeting and so could staff start by. Describing how the city council's latest action affects this, the work being done by the planning board?
Yeah, so, um. City coun, so the original resolve that city council made to, um, to consider. To consider changing the language in the, in the ordinance. Or to consider removing the income standard rather and the strip zone limitations. With, with consultation from the SNRB, that resolve stands. There is an additional order to forward a recommendation on whether. To remove specific text from the ordinance and add specific text to another part of the, of the ordinance. And that's included in the packet, but both are, both are still there, but what this did is it added specific text change to consider.
Is it safe to say that? The planning board understood the original resolve, which was essentially a question. And that city council amended? In order to initiate? Did council actually initiate a zone change, a zone change process?
The, so the council felt that they had done that with the initial resolve. This second order actually did that, very formally created text and initiated. Uh, the consideration of a zone change, um, because the council wanted that to occur, but they weren't specific enough with the initial resolve. So now you have. Sort of a policy directive in the resolve that was originally done, that explains. Why they want you to consider the text, but, um, they are connected, um, they're one resolve and one order. But the intent is for you to provide an opinion on the two of them together to return to council that would be. A recommendation on an ordinance change.
Okay. So we wanted this to be informational. In order for us to sort of really think about this, I think it's important for us to know exactly what. We need information on, that is to say what the resolve was, so correct me if I'm wrong, staff. Council, uh, drafted language that would. Eliminate new residential dwellings in the agricultural, agriculture and resource protection zone within the Lake Auburn watershed?
Correct.
Would remove the income standard for new houses. In any other section of the agriculture resource protection zone. On ten acres as well as those lots that are six point two acres existing prior to two thousand seventeen.
Not sure about the last one.
Let's just say all conforming, all conforming.
Yeah.
Currently conforming lots, because there's language in both sections, but essentially what they're doing is. So they're, so they're, they, they want us to consider. Removing, so no new residential dwellings in the agriculture resource protection zone in district within the Lake Auburn watershed. And removing the income standard in all other portions.
Correct.
And. Does that encapsulate everything?
So the, the other piece of that is the, um, limitations of the residential strips. The SNRB sent a communication to include in the council packet today that the council will pro, provide some clarity on that. My sense is what they meant was the residential strip limitations was. The fact that there was a defined depth of those strips that limited the house to being within that strip. Even if the parcel was much deeper, um, you weren't allowed to build out of that strip, that was the limitation. Uh, but I think we'll get some clarification from council on that on, on Monday. If the ordinance was amended to remove the income standard. I think you've essentially done away with the limitations of the residential strip. Unless you replace that with some other connection to a farm, um, in order to be able to build a house in the ag zone.
Okay. All right, so I just wanted to make sure we all knew what exactly is being asked of us, so at this point. Um, I know staff had materials that they wanted to present to us based on some of the questions we had, uh, last time. Uh, Mr. Dubois, we have moved on to the workshop and so you are. No longer recused, um, as I believe you only recused yourself for item three.
Okay, should I, I set to go ahead?
Yep.
Support, okay, okay. Um, so as you were saying, this is a workshop. The intention here is for it to be the first of a few workshops, I think, because there is a lot of. There are several years of, um, this has been considered over time, the cha, changing the ag zone. In any number of ways, so. Really, this is an opportunity to, to share, um, to share questions that you have, so for background. In this packet, I have included, um, in the packet that folks can find on the Auburn planning board website. There are excerpts from the comprehensive plan that address the ag zone, there are excerpts from the. The, the chapter on agriculture and natural resource protection, even from the nineteen ninety-five comprehensive plan. A few years ago, um, the city hired a, a group to, to. To write a report essentially on, on recommendations for the ag zone and that report is included as well, so. All of this, there's also, there are also minutes and the staff reports from past meetings where they have considered. Um, changing the language of the income requirement in city council and, and in the planning board and also language to. Change the residential strip zones from a depth of four hundred fifty feet to seven hundred feet. So that, that's all background and I encourage you to, to look over that and see what has been the discussion so far. The planning board does not need to make any specific action today. We will be writing questions down and in the future, we're hoping to, our intention is to make a story map. With a question and answer component to really write down the questions that the public and the planning board have. In order to address them in a public way and make that available for people and. Hopefully have a really robust discussion before making any, um, making any recommendations. So I'm going to go through the staff report, um, some background. Is the Sustainability and Natural Resource Board, um, has been meeting. Um, has been meeting so far, they've met, I think weekly. To help the planning board to make a recommendation and currently they are trying to put together, um, language to share with the planning board on what they recommend. For, for this change here. So the planning board, so, um. So here, this is just background, I, what we did is we gathered some functions of the agriculture and resource protection zone. We gather recommendations on what houses should be like in and around the, the ag zone and. How, um, how the resources that we have that guide city decision-making suggest that. The ag zone, um, might be handled in the future. So the places that I gathered these from, they are, I've gathered information from the future land use plan and the comprehensive plan. As well as the specific chapters that deal with agriculture and resource protection. These are not zoning documents, but they are the documents that the planning board typically and staff uses. To guide, um, zoning and ordinance decision-making. So a few functions of the agriculture and resource protection zone that are identified in these plans are to preserve and protect. Auburn's agricultural heritage, natural resources and scenic community open space while maintaining economic value of the land for appropriate future development. A second, a second use is to protect natural resources like Lake Auburn and Taylor Pond watersheds. Provide land at a lower cost to farmers starting or expanding commercial operations in Auburn. And separating agriculture from residential areas which are not often compatible with each other and we've had a few. We see that even, we see that even now in the, in the city, it can be tough when agricultural uses are next to, directly next to residences. Um, another is to preserve the opportunity for future planned projects, especially to increase. The resilience and viability of Auburn's food system and to add value to the city as a congregate. So those reasons, it's really to, um, one use of the agriculture and resource protection zone is for agriculture, agricultural endeavors. Another is to protect the natural resources, those are not really one in the same agriculture and resource protection there. Another is as a land bank, so, um, preserving land for future smart growth as the city decides its best. So some guidance that we have from these documents about residences within and abutting the agriculture and resource protection zone include. That the plan, the comprehensive plan recommends that Auburn grow outward from the city core. Because it would limit sprawl and, and encourage development where. Where city services are most available and where, um, dispatch services can get to folks. Et cetera. Not eat, eat up as much land essentially. The comprehensive plan specifies that sprawled residential development in rural parts of Auburn is undesirable, it, it does say this. Um, the comprehensive plan specifies that residences should be limited to accessory only. To aid, um, commercial agriculture or as part of planned unit developments in which land is permanently preserved for public recreation. The nineteen ninety-five comprehensive plan supported reducing residential strips from fifteen hundred feet to eight hundred to prevent bubble subdivisions. Throughout the rural area, so that's nineteen ninety-five, um, that they were talking about strip zones and the width of them and I will point out that, that it's currently. The residential strip zones are not at eight hundred feet, they are, they are set at four hundred fifty feet from the center of the roadway. That's the depth currently of those zones. However, the comprehensive plan also with those items recommends that there be a mechanism for individual landowners to. To petition the city for a change. Um, and use based on the circumstance of their lot in case where ag uses would not be profitable, so we. The last, um, zone change was an example of a case like that where. Where that was ag zone and it is, it was rezoned because. Agriculture in this case was not profitable for that, for that lot, so that was the individual landowner's choice and that is a mechanism that is supported in the comprehensive plan. Um, for individuals. Another recommendation is that they maintain a ten acre minimum density except in three cases. This is recommended in the crossroads report, this is not in the comprehensive plan, but this was a report that we. That, um, a consultant worked with Auburn to deliver. And, um, in partnership with a now dissolved agriculture, um, ad hoc committee. So those, those recommendations are to maintain a ten acre minimum density except in three cases. First, when a member of an existing farm family wishes to build a house closer to ma, to, um, the main homestead that is closely connected to farm operation. Um, second is for a planned unit development. That have incorporated permanent land conservation and can support. And can support and plant, support with, with a plan how their farm will serve food needs in the area. And a third, a third is when increased housing density doesn't change the rural character of the area. And seventy-five percent of a large parcel is permanently protected, so. A pattern here is that. Is that they're recommending if there are to be houses, they might be where there are either other families' houses on a similar lot. Or where, or and where, um, other land can be conserved, so. So putting some land away to, to preserve that, that value there. So recommendations for the future. For, for future land use and development in the agriculture and resource protection zone pulled from these background sources include. To consider separating the agriculture and resource protection zone into two zones, one for ag purposes. Agriculture purposes and the other for conservation, preservation, recreation. So these here, these considerations are ones that we might make moving forward to recommend to the, to, um. To the council, ones that have been considered in the past and one, and options that we might consider as we think about our questions and discuss. And discuss this. Another is to create a land use map that inventories Auburn's existing and potential food production and processing. Capacity which identifies existing food production, processing and sales locations for future development of food systems activities. So one recommendation also which is a suggestion currently or which is, um. Currently given to planning board to consider is to eliminate all new residential development in the Lake Auburn watershed to protect. Um, the water quality there. Within the ag zone, yes, thank you. And standards for citing accessory dwellings like road frontage requirement should be relaxed. While otherwise not changing allowance or density of residences in and around the ag zone. So this, this suggestion really gets at if we want to increase housing density, looking at. Other areas that are already zoned as something not like as a residential zone, so either rural res maybe or low country density and considering. Reducing the required road frontage, making it so more homes or more density can be added in the spots. That already allow housing, so that is one consideration. A recreation master plan should be required. To outline the scope, scale and location of residential units. And ensure cluster development, had, a cluster development pattern in which most of the land is. Um, retained as recreation and open space. One of these recommendations is for a conservation easement or other legally binding. Preservation measure should be required if, um, planned unit developments emerge there. And for any ag land taken by housing not related to agricultural use, so a residence not with, um, an income standard, for example, or not connected. With, um, using. with using the land for that reason, at least one acre should be permanently protected. That is one recommendation. And another is to change the, to the designation of land, change the designation of land in the ag zone, which should be based on the land use map, including prime farmland, and should include expert farmer and public input. So, the map should include things like soil designations, wildlife, land cover, slopes, active forestry, proximity to water and sewer, land banking for future land needs. So, this is a consideration that really looks at why is the land designated agriculture and resource protection? What is the purpose of the land? What is the value of that land? And considering from there, what might make the most sense if you will take, if the board decides to take any land from that, or remove the income standard from part of that land, which land it makes sense to do that for? The Planning Board and City Council have considered changing both the residential strip zoning limitations and the income requirements in past meetings, which resulted in the income standards being amended, but remaining encoded with no change in the residential strips. So, in the background there, yes.
Oh, go.
Oh, sorry. So, background there in 2019 is that there was a consideration to change the income, or the residential strips, rather, oh, no, sorry, the, the income requirement from the household earning 50% of their income from farm activities. That was changed to, in order to have a residence in the ag zone, a new residence in the ag zone, they must earn, the household must earn 30% of their gross annual income, the median income based on census data of Auburn from agricultural uses, which comes out to be about $15,000 a year gross income from ag, from agriculture. So, that happened in 2019. There was also a consideration in 2021 to increase the depth of the residential strips from 450 feet to 700 or 750 feet. And the Planning Board ultimately recommended against that, recommended to not change those, the residential strips. And council ended up tabling that vote to, and tabling that vote indefinitely. So, that's, that was a result of that, that proposal. Yes.
Just to clarify, Catherine had cited the 95 Comprehensive Plan on page two, number 11. The plan supported reducing residential strips from 1,500 feet to 800 feet. We often refer to those residential strips as the depth on one side of the road. That 95 plan is referring to the full depth. If you have 750 on each side of the road from the center line, that's a 1,500-foot strip. We are typically referring to those as really just the depth on one side, and we call it a 750-foot strip. So, there is some consistency there, even though the numbers are essentially doubled in the 95 plan, referring to the, the full depth on both sides combined.
So, I'm going to jump in here. So, that's, I think, a good background on some of the recommendations that have been made in the past. I hope Planning Board members had time to look through this. I think right now is a good time to stop and ask if there are questions from members of the board. Things that, in looking through this, that, so I can say, in looking through, so having looked through these recommendations and being familiar with, having been involved in some of them, one of the things I would like us to be looking, to be able to look at is the, a map of prime soils. Because we're talking about agriculture and natural resource protection. And so, I would think that even if we were going to allow a home in the zone, the primary purpose of the zone is for agriculture and resource protection. So, that would be the primary, that would be something that, that would be looking at in terms of, like, are we looking at, do we want this to be everywhere? Do we want it to be in only certain places? But I don't think we can have the, answer that question without looking at prime soils, tree cover, and if we have any sort of, like, habitat information from inland fisheries and wildlife, I think that would be good to, for us to be able to look at in a future packet as well. Anyone else think of anything, kind of jumping out to them as Catherine's going through this?
We, we have a lot of that on the existing Ag Hub and from the previous discussions, but I know Catherine and John have been working with an intern that we have, a GIS intern, to get those all onto an interactive map, so you can overlay those on top of each other and see where areas have more than one of those values in a single parcel.
It is, the map is, it, it exists now, it's just not publicly available yet. So, we're still trying to work that out. But if anyone has questions, happy to, to try to find.
Okay. I'm just thinking about things that I'm, I'm sure we're gonna, that's gonna come up. We're gonna want to see those things in a subsequent discussion, and I might as well ask for it now instead of waiting till then to ask for it. But Riley, it looks like you had a...
I had a question about the Crossroads Report. The, there's a couple things listed in there where they mentioned that some areas should be permanently protected. Is there, there's no mechanism available to us to permanently do anything to a piece of land, is there? Like, actual permanence?
There are conservation easements that I, maybe you can help me, Eric, but there are conservation easements that we can, we can put, we can deed that, that land is protected for a certain amount of time. I think there are some, there's a, there might be some tax programs that would give...
Yeah, zoning is not permanent, I think, is what they were pointing out, and it really could change with any city council. Conservation easements would be permanent. There are some tax programs that are not permanent, but they do have longer-term commitments to some of them.
So, maybe the question really is going to be, can staff present to the board subsequently also what mechanisms exist? If, if we were to decide to go with some of these recommendations and say, like, maybe we'd be in favor of this, but it would require a landowner to do X, Y, Z with their property, you know, like, put a certain amount of it in conservation? What the options are for that? What, what, what are permanent options, semi-permanent options?
Yes, that's why I mentioned it, because it seems like those are options that aren't actually possible. Like, if we can't, we can't permanently protect any, any, we can't take a piece of land and say this is permanently protected. I don't think that's an available mechanism to us.
Right. So, we can, I think an easement is, like, a deed, a deed restriction is really the only way we can do it.
That's the most permanent. I think it would really help property owners to know what your priorities are, and for the city to have some kind of a plan so that it's not random protection of parcels that might interfere with future city plans, but they, you're actually protecting the pieces of land that have the most values that the city's identified as.
But be able to present those things to the board and explain which of them, like, sort of what tier they are on that sort of permanence?
Yes, the mechanisms that the board can, might be able to recommend in order to achieve the goals that we have in front of us. Yep.
If one of our goals is to permanently protect land, what are, what are options for that? You're right. Like, that's, I think that's really what you're asking about, Riley, is like, to permanently protect it.
It's as much the options as it is that, I don't know that these, these, so, for instance, it says, I'm looking at number six on page two, says for AG land to be, or for AG land taken by housing not related to agricultural use, at least one acre should be permanently protected. So, I guess that would be, what, what methods, I, I, you know, closest to permanence that would be able to, available to us. But I just don't, the way it's worded, I don't, you know, it doesn't seem like it's an actual possibility. Permanently protect an acre.
We can outline those options. It is a possibility, but it's not, not a function of zoning. It would be more like a conservation easement. And they did also point out that because our ag zone depresses the value of land as compared to, you know, the rest of southern Maine where residential uses are allowed, there's less of an incentive for a farmer or a large lot owner to sell development rights, because those development rights don't exist. So, there's really not enough value to sell to encourage a landowner to enter into a permanent conservation easement. So, this temporary measure sort of prevents a permanent solution.
For the next packet that we end up, or with our next workshop, can we also, I don't know how feasible this is, I heard you say you have a GIS intern. Identify areas in the ag zone that exceed, you know, the, the, the one unit per acre, either along roadways or as, as an area. I don't know, exceeding one per 10, maybe we want to say, like, that are double the density? I mean, is there, like, a number people want? But I think that would be, because those might be areas we want to look at, too, and say, like, if, here's an area that's in the ag zone that's already adjacent to residential area, and they've got a higher density, then we might not support this everywhere, but we would support it in areas that, you know, look like this.
To clarify, are you asking about in the, just in the ag zone where it's denser, or maybe areas even adjacent to the ag zone that maybe they could, if the strips might be expanded there, that, that as well, or?
Um, I think really, I think really just the ag zone. We're, we're being asked to look at the ag zone, and, and so I'd like to focus there, but...
Right.
We, we have maps, and I think this would answer your question, I just want to confirm. We have maps and data that looks at frontage and lot size of every lot in the ag zone and determines the likely number of 10-acre lots that could be created if the income standard went away for each one of those parcels. Each lot has a number on it that was...
Yeah. Well, that's a totally separate question, too, but that, that would also be useful, I think. But that's not quite the question I was asking, right? I'm asking currently, what are, are there areas that currently exceed, right? Is there, like, the corner of this road and this road, and it's zoned ag, but by golly, it's like, you know, 12 houses on two-acre lots?
Okay. Yeah, non-conforming existing house lots or parcels. Yeah.
I know, I said by golly, I'm sorry. Jeez.
Mr. Cousins, that report you just mentioned, does that include other challenges to, to the land, like wetlands or slope, or, or is it just straight based on acreage?
It, it includes frontage, and it assumes, I'd have to double-check the data from it. I think it assumes a loss of land to slopes and wetlands. That's just an anticipated average, but not a lot-by-lot specific calculation.
Can we also have the, one of the things that was useful when the Planning Board looked at this before was looking at definitions other than our own. Our definition of a farm is quite different.
Yep.
Can we get the state, sort of how the state defines agriculture, but also forestry? Because I think we should look at forestry as well, because forestry is included as a...
Yeah. So, another thing that I just want to point out that I don't know if I added to the, to the staff report is, one recommendation is from, from, from some of these background, background documents, and I think especially the, I think the comp plan recommends this, as well as the Crossroads Report, is to, they do support changing the income standard or removing the income standard in, in favor perhaps of other, of another kind of meaningful engagement with the land. So, something that serves, I read that as something that serves the same purpose, whether that's designated by, or a similar purpose based on what, what the stated values here are. Whether that's an income standard or something else that's defined, maybe the, the other definitions can help with that.
Do you want to be interested in knowing is, like towns and cities comparable to our size and their ag zone and standards?
In, in line with that, can we get their conservation as well? Because it's, I know we're sort of an odd duck in combining both of those.
Yeah, we're starting from a very different point than most places, having had this in place for so long. And I'm thinking, Maine farmland has specifically commented on the small number of conservation easements here, because there's not that value difference for them to purchase to entice a property owner to protect, to protect their land. But we could certainly look at other communities and might even ask if they could sort of give you an overview on that from a more statewide perspective.
Because this land right now, the, this, about 40% of this land is not buildable without meeting that income requirement. It really does kind of function as a, a conservation type zone, because there, there's not, you really can't build on it. So, it, it has, we have a unique, a unique situation where all that land could be reconsidered. And so we're kind of working from the other direction here.
I have a timeline question, I guess. This is, so, we're, we're considering this. We've considered the income requirement before, as we discussed, staff discussed earlier, but is this, this is before us because of, partially because of LD 2003 and language in it outlawing income standards?
I, I know that was referenced in the council order. I think it depends on rulemaking, whether or not LD 2003 would actually affect the housing growth, any housing growth in the ag zone.
That, that's what, so, with the rulemaking, would the rulemaking be complete by the time that we're, March 20th, by the time we're supposed to return this to council?
We can get you an answer on that. I'm not sure.
So, the date that's, that's listed in the order is, it says, I'll just read it. Therefore, it be, be ordered that City Council directs Planning Board after consultation with the Sustainability and Natural Resource Management Board to conduct a public hearing pursuant to Article 17, Division 3 of the zoning ordinance and report in writing the results of the hearing and recommendations of the Planning Board pursuant to Article 17, Division 4 of the zoning ordinance to the city, to the city council no later than March 20th, 2023, on whether or not to eliminate the income standard and the current strip zoning limitations in all areas outside the Lake Auburn watershed overlay as an ordinance text amendment, as shown on the attached proposed text change, text changes. So, March 20th.
Do you guys have any data on how many farms in Maine make more than $15,000? In, in Auburn, I mean, excuse me, not Maine.
And that was one of the challenges we ran into with Crossroads, is what is a farm? How do you define a farm? First of all, is somebody that grows most of their own food a farm? Or do they, the list that we can get at the state and county level are those farms that participate in federal funding programs for, for farms? So, there isn't a great list to say this is how many farms we have in Auburn.
I think one of the questions the Planning Board's going to have to ask itself, too, is moving forward, we understand what council's asking of us, but our job is to sort of look at, at the ordinance, right, and say, okay, does this zoning change make sense given the comprehensive plan and the purpose of the zone? And the Planning Board at some point is really going to have to define out loud, and it's already written, right, like, what, what the purpose of the zone is. And we're going to have to weigh whatever we decide and whatever we're coming up with against that purpose as well, I think. Right? So, I think that it would behoove us, instead of looking at this and saying, should we do, should we be doing this for the reasons that council wants to do this, we should be asking the question, is this a reasonable thing to do, given what we believe the comprehensive plan and the ordinance is defining as goals for this zone? Does that make sense?
Sounds good. Sounds good.
I do have a lot of other things to say other than questions too.
Go for it then.
Okay. The first thing is, is the fifteen thousand dollars reasonable? I have had a small farm and it was just rabbits, and it was pretty easy to make three, four, five thousand dollars a year, after, after having had it for about five years. And that's probably fifteen years ago.
What did you do with rabbits?
I don't want to say it in public, how's that? They, they are.
I just didn't know you made money off that.
There is a market for every purpose possible. The pet market is the biggest one and the most lucrative, but I didn't grow rabbits to raise pets.
Just, just for clarification, was that net profit or was that gross income? Because we look at gross income compared to that fifteen, okay.
Making a profit is another story. And I do think that we should look into, well, first of all, the word all in here in the strip zoning and all that and saying all ag areas should be changed. I, I have a problem with the word all, because I do think some type of land use plan should be developed to make some recommendations as to which areas might, for all the recommendations that Catherine listed in the thing earlier. And separating ag and resource conservation, I think has a very big value here, because you, you can really define them separately. And Auburn has a lot of both to offer. And I don't want to reiterate everything Catherine said, because most of those recommendations were very valid.
Are there other questions? We had really asked for this workshop from staff, we had asked staff essentially to do a data dump, right, and give us a bunch of stuff. We've asked for some more stuff. In the meantime, I think what's going to be best at the next workshop, so we can actually start talking about some of the things Mr. Jacques said, is for each of us to be sitting down and identifying like priorities. So Mr. Jacques is identifying a priority of essentially laying out a plan for using different areas differently. I think it would be helpful if we were coming to the table collectively with some of these ideas, so that way we're not forming them in the moment while we're here, but we're coming with them, and that way we can be, we can start discussing them as we get some more of this information as well.
I had a question about the GIS, the soils of importance. We don't, we don't have access to that, but is there something preventing staff from like screenshotting a couple images and sharing that with, or is that a?
Nope, we definitely can do that, yep, and we can, we can add that even, I bet we can probably add that to the website.
Yeah, we, we do have access to it, you do as well, on the existing GIS ag hub as sort of static PDF maps. We'll have an interactive map that has all of that info, and if there's other things you want, we'll, we'll add that as the data is available, but we'll absolutely have that available to you and the public.
And I just want to offer this to the planning board members in case you want to have more information thought out and in front of you on the next workshop. If you are thinking of considerations and you want to, if you want to send them or call with them ahead of time, you don't need to, but I could add them to the, to the story, to the story map and have them there for, ready for discussion if that, if that might make it easier. There's a lot of, I think I put like twelve attachments into this, this one agenda item. There's a lot of information to go over and lots of ways that we could proceed.
Anyone else have any ideas on this?
I have an observation. I mean, we're gonna, we basically have three meetings, three workshops to process this. This seems pretty significant. And the rules of engagement are is we can't process this information together unless it's a public forum. So we're all going to tackle this investigations individually, and then come back and share our points of view from our own investigations. And I guess procedurally, my observation is that seems like a colossal inefficient approach to this, where we should be able to look at the same data at the same time and process it.
We can have special meetings if you'd like, but that's government. We can't sit down together.
Those are just the cards we're dealt.
Yeah.
Inefficiency.
It is our job to do our job in public.
Yeah, and to that point, and maybe I missed it in the last meeting, I can probably re-watch it, but I had thought that one of the takeaways was to formulate a timeline backing into the March date so that we knew if there were public hearings, et cetera, that we had a roadmap moving forward for this deliverable, but maybe.
I thought staff had given us that, but perhaps not. Maybe, maybe I recall talking to staff during our pre-meeting.
I think we talked, I think it might have been in last, in the last packet.
Right, you provided a timeline, yeah.
Yep, not in this one though.
We can update that though and, and share with the board either between now and the next meeting or at the next meeting.
So again, this one was like the preliminary, we got stuff, what do we want to ask in addition? Does anybody want to ask for anything else of staff right now? If not, we're gonna, we're gonna move on.
Real quick, I, I just want to say to the public that same with the planning board members, if you have any, all this information is available under, under the today's date on the planning board website. If you have any suggestions or questions, any question I get over the phone or on email, I will include in the packet and in the presentation, so open invitation for the public to engage as well.
You know, just an additional note is we're working from essentially three different websites from three different discussions that had happened that are related to this. We're working with Liz Allen, our communications director, to create a new website for this discussion and pull resources from those other websites or at least create links, so they're easier for people to find, because they happened in different years, they happened at different times, and some of that information is scattered based on that.
All right, Steph, you feel like you have kind of some sense of some of the things we're looking for for next time?
Yes.
Okay. We will move on to item number five, which is a workshop, city count, on city council ordinance zero seven dash zero two, zero seven, two zero two two, to discuss the moratorium on development proposals involving definitions around public safety facilities, detention facilities, correctional facilities, and or government offices, and a site on which one does not currently exist. And this workshop is pursuant to chapter sixty, article seventeen, division two.
Okay, so, so there's no, so for the planning board today, we suggest that, that you all discuss and provide feedback on the definitions, whether they are adequate, and they cover, are, they cover all the different potential, the different uses that we might have for government, correctional institutions, detention facilities, public safety facilities, and if we need to have any kind of specifications or changes there, so this is really just a discussion. Some background for this is that in February twenty twenty-two, council passed a public safety detention and correctional facility moratorium, ordinance prohibiting development of any new public safety detention in prison or prison for one hundred eighty days with a stated reason being that the city's current ordinances governing land use zoning site plan review and special exception do not adequately or specifically address public safety facilities, detention facilities, or correctional facilities. The council later voted to extend that moratorium by an additional one hundred eighty days until February of twenty twenty-three, because we had not reached a conclusion on the issues and planning board agendas were, and, and the planning board agendas were overscheduled. The ordinance directs the board to provide guidance on public safety, health, environmental, and land use considerations on what regulations might be appropriate for these facilities and uses. The ordinance includes only the following designations. So in all of the zoning ordinances, as in all of the different zones across the city, the only, the only definitions that appear are, or the only uses that appear are, okay, sorry, never mind, the, the council addressed some of these things to consider as a correctional facility, and they define that as a facility in which persons are held and housed primarily for the purposes of punishment, correction, or rehabilitation following conviction of a criminal offense. This definition includes pre-release facilities, but does not include work release centers. They included detention facilities, which is a facility in which persons are held and housed in custody under process of law pending the outcome of legal proceedings, but not for the purpose of punishment, correction, or rehabilitation following conviction of a criminal offense. Public safety facility, which is a facility in which the operation, in which the operations of law enforcement, communications, fire services, emergency management, special operations, investigations, or civil services are housed for emergency and public safety responses. And here's, so that's what council has identified as what the planning board might consider. Auburn's land use ordinances only use the terms, this is what I was talking about before, in the zoning ordinance, governmental offices, municipal civic or public service buildings and other utility facilities, or municipal buildings and uses. Those are, that's really, that's all that it says. And the only definition that the ordinance, the current ordinance supplies is municipal uses as any lawful use of a building or of land carried on, by the city sanitary land, oh. Any, any lawful use of a building or of land carried by the city sanitary landfill shall not be deemed a municipal use. Sorry, I think. Think I may have had a typo there. But anyway, they've, they have only defined municipal uses. And the classifications differ depending on the zones, so currently municipal uses are identified as allowed in some zones, government uses or government offices are defined in other zones. Municipal uses and public utilities are defined in still others, so.
So to clarify, as we're going through here.
Yes.
This happens, this has come up in the past too. We have terms in the ordinance referring to all different sorts of government uses, none of which are defined.
Right.
Municipal use, okay, municipal use being the one that is defined, but these other terms being used instead of municipal use, correct? And that, correctional facility, detention facility, public safety facility do exist as definitions in a proposed ordinance.
In a proposed ordinance, that's what council has, they added that to the moratorium.
And, and what we're really being asked is, do we believe that those are appropriate definitions of those, for those facilities? And in addition, do we believe we need further definitions for different types of municipal use? So that way, those municipal uses, when they come up in, in the zoning, actually reference a definition. Is this, does that sum up what we're being asked to do?
And I think the next step would be, do your special exception criteria cover all the aspects that we would need to think about to review one of those proposed projects? And if not, just like any other special exception use, you could have criteria specific to a certain use category that also needs to be considered in the approval.
And in, in the staff report, a way to think about it could be to look at what a few other towns, what other towns do for, for reviewing new public safety building projects, or how they, how they consider, how they zone existing public safety facilities. There is an example list of definitions. Well, there's one in Lewiston, I, that one was chosen because it's right across the river. There's also a pretty solid list of definitions existing in the Augusta, in Augusta's ordinance, probably because it's the state capital and houses lots of government buildings. Could be a way to consider it, and I think part of this ask too is to consider the zoning and designations for existing public safety buildings as one part of the question, and as another, maybe a separate one, consider future public safety buildings, like new placements of them, what might be considered, what might be the differences in uses, et cetera.
Right, we're looking for some feedback tonight, but I think based on the council's ordinance and the questions you're asking, we could come up with a draft set of texts that unifies the existing municipal and government use ordinances to match a single, single use category and a definition, as well as the other ones that the councils ask for, such as correctional institutions, public safety facility, and those, and we could have sort of a shell for you to look at, a menu, to look at at an upcoming meeting and then provide feedback and prepare something for consideration as an actual, actual text change to provide the clarity the council's asking.
Does anyone have specific feedback on what they would like in that proposal from staff?
Just looking at the definition of public safety facility, the only, it's a little off topic, but the only thing I would add is emergency medical services to that. EMS is a division of the fire services, but if you ever ran into a situation where a substation was needed to specifically house an ambulance, it's more of like a very fine print details of where somebody could say, well, you're not, not technically providing a fire service based out of this building, and you're providing EMS services, even though it is going on fire responses as well, but just fine print stuff.
Yeah, I think that's, I, I agree. I think that when it comes to municipal uses, I think that we, in the same way, these facility correctional detention, public safety facility are kind of broken out, obviously, public safety facility is going to be, would be considered a municipal use, right? But it's its own unique municipal use, so if staff could sort of think about ways to categorize municipal use, so there's like government offices, right? There, there are different sorts of types of government use and possible definitions there. In the guiding question, I know how everyone else feels, I don't think that it would be reasonable to disallow new facilities and new locations where they do not already exist. I think you can't, I mean, to put a moratorium on being able to build them. We don't know where we might need them in the future, I guess is the point. Okay, but having said that, we should pay careful attention to the specific regulations that determine the location. So, obviously, I think it's going to be things like city water, sewer, electric, but not just water sewer electric, adequate water sewer electric, like we run into this with solar farms, right? Like we have regulations. regulations about where they can and cannot be placed based on the electric grid because of the infrastructure required for them. So I would assume that we would pay close attention to that with regard to um any government facility.
Yep. You might also, you could consider um distance from other certain um institutions or facilities, um, whether it makes sense in certain zoning, lot, yeah, lots of land use considerations there.
Mm-hmm. Um, I absolutely like guiding, the guiding question number three, whether the citing of new locations warrants involvement of the city council for finding a resolve that the community need for a certain type of facility exceeds the impact of the new facility. The reality is, any government, any, so if it's a small government facility, perhaps it's an office, that might have very little impact. Um, it may require a very, you know, it's very easy to see that that would have an impact. However, if um, if we were to, say, build a brand-new fire station in an area where there was not currently a fire station, um, that would certainly have a large impact on that neighborhood or that area of town. And so I think it would be important for us to have metrics um for determining the need versus the impact. So that, that's, that's where I'm at on that. That's all the input I have. Anyone else?
I think that that gives us some, combined with the council's moratorium language, that gives us some feedback to start to shell out something that you could consider. And once you get it to where you wanna hold a public hearing, um, you can make that call.
Yeah.
I, I do find it interesting that Lewiston's definition and Augusta's definition are different. Um, and maybe we wanna model a city that has something like a correctional institution like Augusta versus Lewiston that just has the police facilities. Um, so I think we would wanna model those definitions separately where um, you know, we can learn something from Augusta, I guess is my point.
We have meaningful feedback if there's nothing to add.
You have, you have enough? You think you can, all right, excellent. Okay. We will move on to item six, which is public comment. Um, so this is open public comment. Members of the public are encouraged to or uh, address the board on any topic that they, they'd like to. Um, and we'll just ask that you please limit your comments to five minutes.
Stephen B. O. five seventy-five Johnson Road. Uh, I don't uh intend to address the substance of the workshop item four, which was before you tonight, but simply to make a couple of procedural suggestions going forward. Uh, first, uh, as Catherine ran to you, uh, the resolve that was originally prepared by the city council with respect to the strip zoning and the income limitation ordinance considerations was changed to an order by the city council, and it specifically uh is requires the board to hold a public hearing. I would encourage the board either itself or through the planning and permitting department staff to not only have at least one public hearing, but to conduct a public workshop, uh, such as was conducted for the septic design change ordinance uh earlier this year at the community center. That's a very good location as well, so that they can be a less structured, less formal presentation of ideas and comments about these two items. Uh, and that, that could be done in one or perhaps even more than one such uh public work. Uh, my second procedural suggestion is that because these income limitations and the strip zoning requirements are both very complex matters with a lot of background to them, they've both been through several ordinance revisions going back fifteen or twenty years, that those two items be separated and not presented as a single ordinance item, that there be separate discussion and considerations of those two items because they are both very intense, very significant, and have a lot of factual information that's available with respect to each of them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pam Russo, seven forty-five West Auburn Road. Um, so I do have a curious question. So the map that she showed you is not the map of the comp plan. The map of the comp plan looks like this. All right? The one that she showed you is the original one that came out where the colors were wrong. So I think that they need to get their maps right. And it is also different from the map that was presented by Eric Cousins in the T two four B presentation. So I think it is very, very important that you are all on the same map. Okay? So this is the map right here.
Okay, actually, Pam, I.
And the other thing I wanted to, go ahead.
So thank you for, thank you for that. Um, if you're, if you are now going to do that with staff, that's great.
Oh, I.
I was gonna say, this wouldn't be the, the venue to continue having that.
Oh, no, I just wanted that to be, it, for everybody to know that there's three different maps out there.
Well, uh, it's also important for everyone to know that in the comp plan, there are several maps, and it can be difficult. Perhaps what, what a suggestion coming out of this could be that staff always identify the name of the specific map and the figure out of the comp plan so that people are able to find it, so.
Right.
I, I will make sure that, that we do that in the future.
I would appreciate that because I was told that the map on there by the city staff was told that that was the current comp plan. And the other thing I would like to point out is that I don't, maybe I'm wrong, but I don't remember anybody saying that the natural resource committee was going to be able to give some input. And I know that they're working on, on something. And uh, so, you know, I hope that you don't make your decisions right now, I'm sure you won't, but just know that there is something else.
Okay.
And um, the other thing I'm really curious about is in that, yeah, you've combined those two, which I don't think should be in, but there is no, I could go back fifteen hundred feet or two thousand feet, there is no definite, there is no, it's not like the other, the first time it came around, it went from three fifty to seven fifty. This one is, there's no end to it. There's no number there at all, and I find that quite disconcerting.
Um, I will address Pam's comment, just so everyone knows. The reason that the planning board is holding a, a couple of workshops is in order to give the natural resources and protection board time to develop their proposal. Uh, they've been meeting about once a week. Um, members of the subcommittee uh from natural resources, uh, uh, the natural resources and sustainability board, I always forget, like, it's such a long name, uh, actually met with staff um and myself last week to give an update about where they were, to ask us questions, for us to ask them questions, so that we could get a handle on when they would be able to get something in front of us. So I just wanted to, to answer that question um directly so that, so that members of, of the public know that um we are certainly working with, with that board and, and um, the reason we're not making, starting out making specific decisions tonight is because we didn't wanna start making specific decisions without getting that feedback from them first, so. Um, is there any, anyone else from the public that wishes to speak?
Elizabeth Dunn. I live at five thirty Court Street. I just wanted to note, and I'm sure that you are aware, but I have to repeat this at the end of this meeting. This room was full earlier with probably almost the whole neighborhood on Andrews Street with some very legitimate concerns and requests and um information provided to you about their neighborhood. I just find it interesting that, once again, this group of people, and I'm sure the council will when they get the chance, disregarded the thoughts and opinions and the rights of the citizens that live in a certain place in order to honor the requests and ideas of twenty-five other people who don't live anywhere near them. Um, I just wonder how we did get to this point where some people matter, some don't. We're setting a reputation for the city of Auburn. I hope that we can do better in the future. We all need to be heard. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that address, wishes to address the board? All right, we will move on to item seven, then miscellaneous upcoming agenda items. So, Steph, what are the things that we are likely to see coming up next month?
So the one we have, um, one that we will see that we have an application for is um a solar project. So that would be out kind of near the Turner border. Um.
Is that in the ag zone?
No.
Okay.
Wait, yes, it is. I'm sorry. My bad. It, it is in the ag zone.
When you present that, can you update us on the percentage of the ag zone that's been used for solar up to this point?
Yeah, so I actually already, yep, that, that, that update is current from the last one, so I can do that.
And does that also take us back to the definition of farm?
Hmm, I, we have a solar ordinance. The reason I ask is because the solar ordinance was really clear about the percentage of the ag zone that could be um, used for solar before there was sort of a moratorium for a breather to stop and think about whether that was something we wanted to continue doing, so.
Um, there will also be the two workshops that we saw today next month. They'll be coming back before you.
Are there any other applications that are likely to make it, but that are not complete yet?
We're somewhat waiting on um, we, we might have the Auburn suburban baseball, which we're waiting on a few items, but they are underway. Um, we don't have enough to put it before the board yet, though.
And there, there are no other, like, incomplete applications or anything like that so far?
No.
Okay. Questions about upcoming agenda items? That moves us to adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?